All right, so it is 5:02, which makes two of us late. For that, I apologize. We are going to open with the flag salute. And if you would stand, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So with that, do we have any announcements? From any members of the board or staff? Okay.
Does Eileen have anything?
Eileen, did you have an announcement you'd like to make?
I did not, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dr. Kaiser, I do have an announcement. Apologize. Chico Unified sold its last Measure K Series Bonds in the amount of $52 million. And we also refunded $22.5 million of 1998 bond issuance. Related to the refunding, I think when we talked about that originally, we were estimating a savings to taxpayers of about $2.5 million. We actually accomplished over $5 million savings on the refunding. And on the new, on the Measure K, we achieved a 1.54 debt to principal ratio. So just as a comparison, a typical 30-year bond, and again, this is interest only, is a two-to-one ratio. So we are accomplishing a significant savings again for taxpayers compared to that standard. And we had a lot of interest in the market. As a matter of fact, we had almost 300 million orders for our $52 million worth of bonds, which speaks to our credit rating, and investors are very interested in putting their money with Chico Unified. So it's one of the best sales I've been a part of. We are taking advantage of very low interest rates in the market right now, so it's excellent for issuers like Chico Unified. And that will allow us to move forward with our facility master plan. So just want to let the board know and the community that a very successful sale.
That's wonderful. And of course, you didn't do fireworks because of the Dixie Fire, but other than that, sounds wonderful. All right, Tom.
I would just like to take a moment, if we may, to, you know, think about our friends and relatives who are out there in Chester and Greenville. It's a really scary time up there, and I know we all wish them well. I'm concerned about those communities.
Many, many people have been impacted. Okay, and that actually calls out for a salute to our firefighters who have been phenomenal. So maybe if you see them in a restaurant, which they are locally, you might buy them a dessert or some other recognition. Okay, so we are, anybody else, though, with announcement? No? We are moving on to our discussion calendar then, and Ed Services, and so Jay Marchand.
And before Jay jumps in, I just want to recognize, this is a really highly controversial topic, facial coverings. And we are here tonight to discuss it, and I look forward to that conversation. But I do want to ask that we all demonstrate civility and respect to each other, and especially to those who may have very differing opinions. I want us to be a model for our students and our community in how to have difficult discussions. That doesn't mean that we don't have those discussions. I'd just like to see us do it respectfully. So with that, Mr. Marchand, if you can get us started, that'd be great.
Thank you, Ms. Staley. Okay, that's, last board meeting, we passed the reopening plan. And then we decided to have the re, the mask update and protocol emergency board meeting tonight. So tonight, I'm going to be going over the protocols for you guys to discuss and make a decision on, on if a student refuses to wear a mask in inside doors. So I'm going to kind of go over that tonight. Again, on July 12th, the CDPH sent forth their guidelines on the reopening, which says that all students will wear masks indoors. And then the governor came out, literally hours after that, saying that he will give local control over on what the protocols will be if a student does not wear a mask. So that's what brings us here tonight. The guidelines issued on the K-12, as I told you, wear a face covering when indoors. Both vaccinated and unvaccinated adults in K-12 school settings are required to wear a mask whenever sharing indoor spaces with students. Recommendations that, at first, CDC came out saying the recommendation was if you could keep them three feet apart and people were vaccinated, they did not have to wear a mask. Since then, they have changed their guidelines to saying all indoors for K-12 education should have a mask. So that's been changed since the last board meeting we had. Again, I just, what I talked about earlier, it gives us the board how we go about enforcing the mask protocols through the CDPH and Butte County Public Health. Couple good things to talk about tonight. First, the CDPH has said that we do not have mandate of physical distancing requirements. Do they recommend three feet? Yes, in most of our classrooms, we can meet that three-foot mandate in class. But again, it's not mandated that we meet that three foot. Also, face coverings are not required outdoors. So at recesses, in between classrooms, when students are outside, or at lunch, after school, they do not have to wear a mask, only inside the classroom. Yes?
After-school program, students?
If they're indoors, they're going to have to wear a mask.
So for some kids are in after-school programs, I mean, how much cumulative time is that, that they're in the class during the day?
Again, I would have to ask them, but again, they have different homework times, but they also have break times where they can go outside. That's one of those things that we're going to be talking about. We will be encouraging breaks for our classes, and we will be doing the same for after-school programs to get them outside so they can take the mask off and take a break. Again, students and staff are required to wear face coverings when riding a school bus. It's the same, school buses are considered the same as a classroom. So if, when a student gets under one of our buses, they do have to have a mask on. Am I correct on that, Mr. Volta?
That's correct. However, there is no social distancing requirement on the bus. We will continue to keep the windows down as long as the weather allows. And we will continue to disinfect the buses before or after the morning route and after the afternoon route.
Again, our goal in our intent during this COVID restrictions is our goal to have all students have access to a safe and in-person instruction in a full instructional day setting. Again, we're going from our A and PM model at the end of last year to a full-day model to start the school year. And for the protection of our students, staff, and the district, it is also our intent to comply with the local, state, and federal requirements. Facial protocols, per the guidelines, Chico Unified students must wear a facial covering while indoors unless they have received an exemption. We briefly talked about this last board meeting. If a family gets from a licensed medical professional, documentation from a licensed medical practitioner to be exempted from the face covering. We have on tonight's presentation an example of that form that they will need to get filled out by their medical professional, and then also the process. But if a family comes in and they have a note from the license, I'm going to make sure I'm saying this, medical practitioner into the office with that, they can immediately go into the classroom without a mask. Previously, when we were taking these medical exemptions, we would give them to our nurse that would double-check with the doctor to make sure that this is happening correctly. At this point, we will be allowing the student to go directly into class without a mask. Then we'll have our nurse check on the form to make sure it's filled out properly.
And just to clarify on that, the reason that we previously had the time delay is that many of the requests that we had for medical exemptions were very complicated. They were health issues, they were food allergies, and they were things that we had to make sure that we could do and do absolutely correctly for the safety of the child. We think this one will be much simpler, and the form certainly is not as complicated as some of the others.
Yes?
Thank you. Mental health professionals, licensed mental health professionals, are they qualified under this to?
That is correct. Face covering protocols continued. To the extent possible, this is during cafeteria recess and PE. To the extent possible, physical distancing will be maximized while unmasked for the purpose of eating and drinking, and especially indoors. Outdoor spaces will be utilized for mealtime to the extent possible. And students will not be required to wear a face covering outdoors, this including during recess and PE. While indoors, students will be provided an opportunity to step outside of their classrooms to remove their mask so they can ask their teacher to take a break, to go outside and take off their mask. Students without masks will be invited to, a mask to wear one while indoors. So we will have masks available when students come in the classroom if they do not have one. Students experiencing discomfort in wearing a mask, we provided a face shield to use as an alternative to the mask. So if a student is having uncomfortable with the mask, again, we will have face shields available for them to wear. So the requirement is a mask or a face shield while they're indoors. When indoors, an exempted student without a facial covering will be requested to put one on, a mask provided if needed. Unexempted students who decline to wear a mask or a face shield indoors will be moved to an outdoor area to work independently. School site staff will contact the student's parent or guardian to explain why facial coverings are required, one more time. And if a student continues either that day or on successive days refuse to wear a mask, the site administrator will call a meeting with the parent and student to offer alternative to in-person instruction, such as Oakbridge or our online academies at the high school. Again, if a student does not wear a mask in class or a face shield, we do have outdoor settings for them to go to. We will have outdoor settings. They'll look differently on every campus because it depends on where they'll have them available. It could be right outside the classroom, it could be under an overhang with supervision, but those will be available. Yes, Mr. Tuss?
Is this a good time to ask about what practices teachers might use? I'm thinking of the younger grades. So a lot of my thoughts on this topic are directed toward kindergartners through third graders. For speech teaching and things like that, is this a good time to ask what, how they might be utilizing outdoor settings for some of those lessons that might involve mouth, you know, dictation and this kind of thing?
Couple things that grade levels can do at that level. They can work with their grade levels to see if there is an outdoor setting for them to share, that they could go out and do those types of lessons. But also, a teacher could put on a shield so their mouth will be showing during the lesson. Okay, again, scenario, I'm just going to go over a scenario one more time. So if a student comes to a classroom, says, I don't feel comfortable wearing a mask, the teacher, or doesn't have one, the teacher will offer them one. Secondly, they will offer them a shield if they do not want to wear a mask. The third thing would be to offer them an outdoor setting for them to do their schoolwork. The next two scenarios would get to talk about, can they get a medical exemption for not having to wear the mask? And the fifth one would be to offer some type of independent study at Oakbridge Academy or one of our academies at our high schools. Again, if it continues, we talked about before, we will have our administrators set up some type of school-based intervention, team meeting, just to see how we can, again, try to accommodate our families.
So we invited Butte County Public Health to join us. I do believe they have a short presentation. We did not receive the slides in advance, so we will do our best to make sure that we can get those slides, if you can get those to us. But I'd like to introduce Nan Starr, who is joining us via Zoom from Butte County Public Health. Hi, Nan.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So I guess I was just given one specific question. I'm happy to take more. Is there a specific part that you wanted me to chime in on here? I'm sorry, I'm coming in a little bit late.
Sure. We had asked that Butte County Public Health would share with us some numbers where we are currently as a county, what that means, what you're seeing in terms of public health concerns. And then I do believe there may be questions from our board regarding the current guidelines from the California Department of Public Health.
Sure. So I'll go ahead and share just some case, a little bit about case information, a little bit about Delta, which I know is on everyone's mind. And then some information about vaccinations, and I'm also happy to take questions. And if I don't have an answer, I can definitely get back with you. And I was given the one question also about CDC and also mandates, so I'll cover those as well. So for the cases, the number of new cases, and these are total confirmed cases, as of August 1st, 13,523 in Butte County. Our new daily case count, which is also, all this information is posted on our dashboard. Our case count is posted, like today, our case count that we have on the dashboard is for August 3rd. That's the closeout time, would be 12 new episode cases. And I'm also happy to send additional information about that. But let me try to break it down really, hopefully, this is a little bit clearer. Episode date can always change. So for example, someone can get tested, and then they come in, let's say, toward the end of their symptoms. And so then we find out later on what their episode date is, and then that time actually gets changed. And so I can give you additional information, but that's why we have 12. And I'm saying that because that number definitely changes frequently. And you'll see on our dashboard, right underneath where it has the infographics, where there's one that's the daily case count. If you look underneath, there's a graph, and that graph actually shows those episode dates, so you can watch over time. I also wanted to share that Delta is increasing, and as you all know, it's increasing across the state, from 53% in June to 84% in July. According to the results that have come in as of July 29th, and there's always different results coming in, there were 10 Butte County residents that tested positive for the Delta variant. So that number also changes, and we're also happy to give you updates as we learn more. Delta, new data from CDC indicates that it is highly infectious amongst vaccinated and unvaccinated people. unvaccinated people. The vaccine is effective at prevention of severe disease, hospitalization, and death. And that's specific to Delta, and we're just continuously trying to stay updated on that and on frequent calls with CDPH to learn more as well. For vaccinations within our county, there is 46.5% of our county is reported to be fully vaccinated and 52.8% with at least one dose, and that includes the 46.5. And that was reported as of the close of last week. I'm going to share just some good news because there's been a lot of, I think, worry and concern about it. But I will say that, for example, yesterday, we had a mobile clinic at Chico High, and 75 people came in and got vaccinated. And you compare that to, the first time we had our mobile clinic at Chico High, there was seven to 10, and that was July 13th. So that's just in a couple of weeks. So we're seeing a lot of increases in people that are getting vaccinated, getting ready for the school year. Chico State also has frequently had vaccinations, vaccination clinics, and they've vaccinated over 1,500 people. So I'm going to answer the direct question that I was given, and then I'm also happy to take more questions. The question that I was provided was, when did the CDC put Butte County in the highest transmission category, and is there a known plan? Oh, that's the second question. So when did CDC put Butte County in the highest transmission category? I actually don't know when it very much, where it started. The specific questions that you're asking is regarding the CDC's website. And so you can actually Google COVID CDC gov tracker, and it has a lot of information. You can break it down by county, and they update some of those data points, they update daily and some of them weekly, and they do a comparison change. So I even noticed from yesterday to today, there's some counties that change. So that's frequently being updated. The second question that I was asked is the plan for Butte, Well, it's the Butte Department of Public Health, to mandate the face coverings. We do not mandate face coverings at all. So what we do is Butte County Public Health is we get the information that is given to us from CDPH and CDC, and we share it with Butte County as part of a public health entity. And I'm happy to take some questions.
I know that Chico State just put out their change in their requirements so that every single person on campus indoors must have on a mask. And that's a very significant change than they had before. Before, it was just athletes and people staying in the dorms. Now it's any indoor building.
Thank you. Thank you for your being here tonight and for your presentation. Do you have any information about how Delta is impacting hospitalizations here in Butte County and mortality or deaths?
I'll share with you the information that I do have regarding mortality. I don't. I know that I have actual numbers because I thought you may actually be interested in it. So I'm going to get those while I'm sharing with you a little bit. We know that Delta is, actually, that's the part that I already shared. We know that Delta is increasing. We know that we're seeing more positive cases within the hospital. But because it's also new and there is a lag in some of the data that is given, and that's just because somebody has to go get tested and then it has to go get results, and then the results have to be reported, that's continuously changing. But our dashboard has information about that, including the hospitalizations. I guess I'm referring you back to our dashboard. I don't have it open right now, so.
Madam President, Vice President, excuse me, Madam Vice President.
Yes, Eileen.
Thank you. Nan, in the Chico enterprise record, two days ago, it was reported that since July 27th until the cutoff, and I'm not sure if it was August 1st or 2nd, there had been 321 new cases reported in Butte County. Why is there such a discrepancy between what was reported in the newspaper and what you just reported to us?
And?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. I was delayed and getting unmuted. I'm actually pulling up our website right now. So I'll tell you, just before I pull up the website, one of the reasons why we see delay frequently, and I also know I am a resident of Butte County, is because there's different data systems that are doing the, there's actually multiple reasons. So I'll give you a couple. So one of them, some of the information is data that's shared at the state, some of them goes through Cal Ready, some of them go through Cal Connect, and that's something that it's definitely not, we're not gathering our own numbers. We're getting these numbers from these government software programs and constantly linking and making those changes. And that's why you're seeing daily updates. So we went from having weekly updates, and as of this Tuesday, so as of yesterday, we're doing those daily updates because of exactly what you said. We're learning more as we move forward. And I guess I'll take another question, but I'm going to pull up our website right now. I don't think I can share anything on here, actually. So if you, our dashboard is actually the place where you're just going to find any information that I'm going to be able to share with you now, and it is updated frequently. We're looking at it. We have a COVID division that is working on it.
So we have a question from Tom Lando.
Hi, Nan. The 46.5% of Butte County residents who are vaccinated, I just want to double check. Does that include the under 12s who can't be vaccinated yet, or is that only eligible citizens?
It does not include under 12.
Thank you.
Mr. Tennis?
I'm looking at the dashboard right now, Nan, and it says that there are 25 current hospitalizations. Does that sound right?
Yes. And I guess the, well, I won't say I guess. Let me be really clear. You'll see numbers frequently change. And so for the dashboard, for the numbers for the hospitalizations, we're updating that weekly. And I guess I'm going back to the case number and going back to, and I'm sorry, I can't see exactly who was speaking before.
This is Matt Tennis. I'm sorry. My apologies. Matt Tennis, yes.
The number's changing also because of what I was explaining at the beginning. Episode dates change. When people are going in to get tested changes, and that changes all of our numbers. And we really want to be able to accurately keep track of two things. We're interested in when people are going to get tested, of course. We're interested when people are positive. We're also interested when people actually had COVID. And sometimes people don't go in until way after they've actually had COVID. And so it takes time for us to get that data updated and to make that link, especially for with our numbers. And we're not the only ones. This happens for every single county across the state is working on this and constantly updating their numbers. So I am happy to send you our link after this call for those that are interested. But yes.
I think you might have just muted yourself, Nan.
Oops.
There you go.
Sorry, you guys.
I think what I'm trying to get at, though, is there, can we see if hospitalizations are up with Delta? To what extent? They're down. There's no chart on the dashboard showing where that, how that number's moved over time. It just says there's 25 current hospitalizations. I'm wondering if you're seeing an impact from Delta in terms of hospitalizations.
Yeah, and actually, I'd like to share a little bit of information. We are seeing an impact, and it's the same way across the state. So we know that this change is something that's expected. It isn't something that's unique just to Butte County, but there's definitely an increase in hospitalizations. Currently, we are not, like, not, I shouldn't say we, all tests are not showing whether or not they are Delta or a different variant. So there's two different types of testing. And because we don't have all the information, we can't say for a fact that it's from Delta. We think that it is from Delta based on what we know is going on with the virus right now.
Okay. And a follow-up question to that one regarding Delta, also from Matt Tennis. I'm looking at the confirmed COVID-19 deaths by date of death in Butte County 2021 chart, and I don't see, frankly, much activity from Delta in the realm of deaths. Can you comment on that?
Yeah. The reason why is because when someone is assigned a reason for their death, it's often that, I'm going to speak in my layman's terms because I'm not an MD. I have a master's in public health. But people, when the coroner, when people sign off on the reason why the person died, it's not necessarily from COVID. So even though we hear this conversation, and I know that anecdotally, I have people in my life that have been hurt and know people that have died of COVID, it doesn't mean the death certificate was because of COVID. So there's no proof that it's actual COVID that is the cause of that person's death. And it has to do with the way that deaths are reported. There's other things that COVID can influence that can cause someone to die.
I thought.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I've got to follow up on that one. And I'm not meaning to drag this conversation out any longer than necessary, honestly. But I thought that anytime COVID was in the mix, so to speak, of a mortality, that it got recorded as a COVID death. Is that an urban legend that I've been?
I'm not going to be able to answer that directly. I'm actually going to have to go talk to some wonderful people that know more than me that I work with to get back to you about that answer.
Because I thought that you just said that somebody could die with COVID, and it would not be registered here on the county data as a COVID death. Is that correct?
Well, no, because I, people, what makes somebody die, and this is going into details, I think we're going off the school board, but what makes someone die isn't actually necessarily COVID. For example, if someone ends up dying from a stab wound, they don't always say a stab wound. They'll say a puncture to the spleen. So that would be an example that I would give. So it doesn't say on there, a knife killed them. And that would just be, that's a really raw example that I'm providing ad hoc right now. But I can give you more information about that if you'd like.
No, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Tom?
Hi, Nan. Thanks again. Just because we have kind of wandered away, and our discussion today is about facial covering protocols, I just want to start from the very beginning. Facial coverings are an effective way to stop the transmission of COVID. Is this correct?
To decrease the transmission, yes.
Thank you.
So does anyone else on the board have a question or administration?
I guess I'll have one more question. Mental health is a concern to me, especially in the wake of what our community has been through. Also, a lot of you might not know this about me, but I was a communications major at Chico State, and we studied nonverbal communication a lot. And I'm concerned that as very young children, in particular, I'm thinking of kindergarten through, through third grade, but even beyond, I think these kids, as their brains are forming, I'm concerned about how having all these face coverings in the academic environment for a majority of their waking day is going to affect their, their mental well-being, not seeing smiles and facial expressions, which I learned in college, are more impactful many times than verbal communication. Is the?
I'm sorry, but if you interrupt the speakers, then that becomes a negative aspect in their ability to communicate. So please stay polite to each other. Go ahead, Matt.
Does the Butte County Department of Public Health, have you guys had any conversations, looked at any research about how masking might affect the social, emotional health of children at this time, as a counterpoint to whatever benefit, you know, may or may not exist out there to masking these, these children?
I muted myself. Thank you for asking that question. I would actually, I think the very best response is to say we're looking at lots of things. We read lots of different articles that are coming in that are well published, but that is something that I would go to behavioral health about, not for, not for our public health department, because we're looking at slowing the transmission of the virus right now.
So public health does not concern itself with, with behavioral health at all?
We have a lot of relationships with behavioral health. The question that you're asking specifically, and it's a really, really great question. I think that's something that I would want behavioral health to answer because they're more of a specialist. I'm not trained in that field, and so have I read articles myself? Absolutely. I'm sure a lot of you have too, but I'm not, I'm not the right person to answer that question.
Thank you.
All right. We really, really appreciate your availability. And I think you mentioned you would share links to the dashboard. How would that happen?
I've been in contact with some of your great staff, and I will forward them some links in the morning.
All right. Thank you very much.
And I can forward it as well.
Okay. Thank you, Nan. Appreciate your being available.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So do we have a speaker's?
Yes. Are we moving to public comment?
Well, I think we're right, we're at that point. Okay.
Madam Vice President.
Yes.
Dr. Kaiser, I have some additional questions. I could wait until after public comment, but they're regarding the mandate that has come down from the state for facial coverage. At what point would my questions be in order on that topic?
Were you intending to ask Nan, representing Butte County Health?
No, no. If you want questions to go that she would respond to, mine would not be appropriate now.
Okay. I think that then we ought to probably wait because otherwise we're keeping Nan online for us longer than necessary. That we're keeping her online longer than necessary. So community input or questions?
Okay, thank you. So we, most of our speakers are in person. We're going to start with Kimberly Snyder, and Kimberly will be followed by Amber Brown. Vice President Kaiser, would you like to remind everyone of the parameters?
Right. So the parameters are that each speaker gets three minutes. We ask you not to repeat another speaker's comments if they've already been made in order that everybody gets their three minutes. How many speakers do we have on the list?
I believe we have 12.
So normally, we only do 10. So in order to let all 12 have their chance, that's why I'm strongly urging you to, once one speaker has made your point, that you not, you know, repeat that over and over again. That way, all 12 can get in. So our first speaker, would you give your name, please?
Hi, my name is Kimberly Snyder. I have two awesome kids going into first and third at Shasta. Let me tell you, if we didn't love the teachers, staff, and principal, we would have jumped ship like so many others. I'm going to make this short and sweet. You guys already have made your minds up on how this is going to go. Your political agendas are loud and clear. Masks should be parents' choice, not yours. Others in California are doing it. So can you? I ask if my child, or I ask if my child is more likely to get struck by lightning than die of COVID, should I never let them leave the house? I want everyone to know, if you wear a mask or not, I support you. Vaccinated, doesn't matter. I support you either way. Let's come together for the kids. Caitlin, I already knew you wouldn't be here from your Facebook post calling in your troops. Kaiser, your endless email responses are rude and unprofessional. Tom, your last quote basically calling anyone who doesn't agree with you dumb is uncalled for and wrong. You have already robbed these children of so much, please don't rob them of their smile. I asked my 92-year-old grandma before heading to Missouri, a Delta variant hotspot, if she was still okay with going. She said, I have this sign in my front yard that says, live with faith over fear. So that's what I'm going to do. I think we should all try that. Thankfully, there is a recall going on right now, and every family in Chico Unified can show their displeasure with your leadership by visiting www.chicoparents.org and learning more about how to help this recall campaign. Lastly, I ask that you save Chico Unified School District half a million dollars and resign now. It's time to have people on this board that fight for our children's education. Fight on, parents, and shame on you, board.
Okay, next we have Amber Brown, followed by Pat Jones.
I did fail to mention that you'll get a warning sign from Mr. Herr. I did fail to mention that you'll get a warning sign from Mr. Hanlon when you have 30 seconds to go. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber Brown. I know most of you know who I am. You've read my emails, I've spoken the past. I recently sent an email today asking Ms. Dolby, Mr. Lando, Ms. Kaiser, Ms. Robinson, and Ms. Stanley to please resign. You have failed our community. You are not the right leaders to make the decisions that we need to have made. I read this the other day, and I thought it was perfect. And I understand that I already sent this to you, but I want you to understand how important that it is. It is my duty as a parent to research and question everything for the sake of my children, not blindly trust. Doctors are not the authority. Teachers are not the authority. The government is not the authority. I am. Masks should be parents' choice. If you don't, if you are not, if you are not strong enough to make this decision, then like I said, resign. I have not heard anything tonight that changes my mind at all. The COVID deaths have stayed the same for months. My children are not at risk. This is political theater and not in the best interest of our children. My kindergartner is going to start school with a mask on. How is she supposed to learn to read? How are the many parents that I spoke out there with their kindergartners getting ready to start learning different languages? How is that going to happen with a mask? All I sit here and hear is all these extra things you're going to do to make sure my child complies. How about let me be the parent and you guys be the teachers and administrators? Please give us mask choice. That is what we're asking for, and nothing more. Thank you.
Next, we have Pat Jones, followed by Catherine P.
Well, I know you're sitting there, and you have some hard decisions to make. Hopefully, you make them smartly. Are you aware that there have been many tests and studies about masks, if they help, if they keep people safe? Not one of them has been proven. There are no, there have been a lot of studies that say that they don't work, but there's not one that says masks do work. So right there and then, you should be really thinking hard about requiring little children to wear masks. It should be the parent's right to decide if the child is going to wear a mask or not. You're putting so much fear in these children that they're all going to need mental health by the end of this next year if something doesn't happen. And it's up to you to make it happen. Do you also know that Orange County Board of Educate, or the school board, is suing Governor Newsom because of his mandates? Maybe you guys should get on that lawsuit with him. If you all stuck together, maybe then you would take control of the schools instead of letting the governor mandate to you what to do. Why do we have you up there, and why are you doing it? If you're only going to listen to the governor, we don't even need a school board. Now, I think that the vaccines or shots are an important part of the mask, because the next step, you're saying if they don't have a vaccine or shot, they're going to need a mask. Dr. Robert Malone, he's the inventor of the mRNA. It's really bad for children to get this vaccine. It causes heart inflammations in children. And there's been cases of that locally that I know of, and it isn't just children. And it did cause a death. And it wasn't a COVID death. It was a vaccine or shot death. The other thing in these shots is something called graphene oxide. Graphene oxide, if you put it simply, is the lead in a pencil. How many times do you tell a kid not to put the pencil in their mouth, because they might get lead poisoning? But instead, we're injecting it under their skin? I mean, this is really dangerous. Your first allegiance should be to students and not to the teachers' union. It's up to the parents, and the parents vote for you. So please make a great decision, and don't ask for masks for everyone. And also, you can be held personally responsible if kids do get sick because of the masks.
Our next speaker is Catherine P., followed by Anja.
Hi, everybody. I'm Catherine Posey. Thanks for all your attention, reading, and responding to emails and questions related to the mask policies. I'm a PB High and Chico State alumni. I'm not a parent. I teach at the college level, and I'm a curriculum developer in the area of Holocaust and genocide studies. I've taught middle school English and been an elementary school librarian. Just to give you a little bit of background about myself, I say all that because as I share information with you today to consider, I'm particularly aware of the need to evaluate sources of information, including potential biases in the currency of the information. So I've got three points for you to consider. Point number one, children transmitting the virus. So in July 2020, the Official Journal of the American Academy of Pediatrics published a piece that concluded that children infrequently transmit COVID-19 to each other or to adults. And that piece based their conclusions on a study published in an issue of Pediatrics, as well as four other recent studies that examine COVID transmission by and among children. And I'll email you all these citations. Point two relates to the data we have on the risk of COVID-19 to young people. So over this year's season, CDC data revealed the flu was five times deadlier to children aged 14 years old or younger than COVID-19. The risk to children is so low, the New York Times recently noted, "A child is 10 times more likely to die in a car accident than COVID-19." So the risk to children is .0002 percent, even less than vaccinated adults. There were 335 deaths in the U.S. due to COVID in those younger than 18, and all of those cases had other underlying conditions. My third and final point relates to the fear of what happens with no restrictions. So I would argue that we shouldn't be requiring masks based on fears that aren't supported by the data. For example, how many schools were opened with no masks and no social distancing that had super-spreader events? What happened in Sweden, for example, at the beginning of everything in spring 2020? They kept their children in school with no masks wearing, no social distancing, and no testing. There was more cleaning than normal, and children who were sick were sent home. Despite those lack of restrictions, none of the 1.8 million children in Swedish schools died. In conclusion, I share these three points in the hopes that you do vote for mask choice for the parents of the students in this school district, similar to what districts like Orland and Clovis near Fresno have chosen to do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anja, there's no last name, Anja, followed by Mary Murphy.
First of all, I was curious that the children are going to be required to be wearing masks. I don't see anybody wearing masks in here right now. I mean, the idea that whatever threat is happening is not a threat right now, but it's going to be a threat in the classroom. It's not a threat at Wendy's burger joint, but it's a threat over at Taco Bell. This is theater, and it's theater of the absurd. My comments are, over the course of the COVID pandemic, the CDC and WHO have clearly stated that communicable diseases, disease prevention by masks and distancing is not based on science and are therefore not recommended outside of medical settings. Okay? That was, we were told that throughout, medical settings. And now all of a sudden, it's other settings. If, in fact, viruses could be stopped, any kind of virus, and it doesn't matter what virus, I don't care if it's novel or not, any new scientist will tell you this. If viruses were transmitted by aerosol in the air and could be trapped by a flimsy little mask, a little cotton mask, we would have been wearing them for the last few decades. Did you see anybody wearing any masks? No. And you should be asking your public health department, why is it that if viruses were so contagious, hospital staff didn't even wear masks until this year? Why aren't you asking these fundamental questions? How dim would one have to be to not ask really good, basic questions? And why is it that they're running in the county cycle threshold on the PCR test of 45 cycles? That is tantamount to looking at a speck on the moon and saying, "That's dangerous, and that's going to cause COVID on Earth." It's that ludicrous. We're talking about exponential numbers of amplification of a viral particle, not even the full virus, and on a test that says on the product insert cannot detect infection. And this is what all this theater is about. That virus test, the COVID swab that you guys are going to be mandating soon enough for schoolchildren, that test cannot detect infection. And the public health department knows that, and it's on the test, cannot detect infection. The inventor of the PCR test has said so multiple times. So I would really urge you to do your due diligence and take care of the children in this county and in this city, Chico, which is your, that's what you're here for. You're not here to carry out orders from on high. You're here to take care of the children in this county. And you better look behind the curtain and find out how much of a scam this is being run, because the lawsuits will come. They will absolutely come. And you guys are going to be very surprised, because you're not paying attention.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Murphy, followed by Nathaniel Hart.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. Pretty much everybody said everything that I had hoped to say. I did send an email with, I did send an email with many references. And what concerns me is people keep going back to, as a public health person said, the CDC. And again, all their quotes were in relationship to the current testing. And as the woman before me said, those tests are invalid. So all these numbers that keep getting quoted as to the numbers of positives are not, are invalid. If a test is invalid, then the test results that people are getting are invalid. So unless somebody comes down with actual symptoms, your data is incorrect. So if you're basing this on data, which is science, you need to look at the actual science reports that have been in peer-reviewed articles. And I, again, I urge you, if I didn't send it to you guys, I did try. Kathleen, thank you very much for responding that you received it. And really, take a look at, those are hard, scientifically reviewed journals, with the exception of one which I stated is in the beginning of the peer review process. But there are no scientific studies that have shown that there is, that the masks, the cloth masks, are stopping these viruses. So thank you very much, and please allow the parents to make these decisions for their kids.
Our next speaker is Nathaniel Hart, and then I will be calling Katie Vanderwall-Cook.
My name is Nathaniel Hart. I am a concerned parent of two young kids that go to Johnny McManus Elementary School. They're going into second and fourth grade. My son, trying to learn how to read and write and everything like that, being in first grade for only two hours a day, has really, I think, set him behind a little bit. Thank God, my kids are smart, and I talk to them like real human beings, and they actually, you know, have learned a little bit more from us than frankly, the school system. My main reason that I'm here tonight to speak is because my son kept getting headaches during school, when he had to go back to school. And, you know, you're only wearing a mask two to three hours a day, but he kept getting headaches. The teacher would call me, he'd go down to the nurse's office. I took him to the doctor twice, tried to figure out what's wrong. The teacher came up to my car, and, you know, this whole time, I'm thinking to myself, it's because he's breathing in his own CO2 and bacteria all day. And now he's going to be breathing that in for eight hours a day, including the bus. So how's that going to stop my kid's headaches and stuff from his own CO2 and bacteria? It's ridiculous. And Newsom has recalled for a reason, this being one of them, and you're going to be next. And I am a concerned parent, because it is ridiculous. I mean, if you can smell everything, smell everything through your mask, what's going to prevent the virus from getting in your mask? It's ridiculous. It's completely asinine. More facts about it, like that professor said, very smart lady, she's made some good points. .0002 percent kids died from this virus. You have a better chance of getting struck by lightning, like the other lady said. So now I'm just repeating stuff, but I'm a pissed-off parent, and you guys better recognize what's going on. And yes, lawsuits will be coming, and one of them might even be mine.
Hi, Katie. This is the Chico Unified School Board. You'll be addressing the school board. If you hear a bell, it means you have 30 seconds left, okay?
Bye.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, this is Katie Cook. Thank you for taking my call. I'm speaking with you tonight due to my concern for our students and staff going back to school on August 16th. Although I feel we absolutely should be going back to school in person, full-time, I do also feel some very serious steps must be taken to prevent the spread of this very serious and very real viral disease. Currently, we have 48 COVID cases in our county of children ages 5 through 17, and our overall vaccination rate hovers at 46 percent. I adamantly believe all students age 12 and over, and as well as the USC employees and volunteers, should have to be mandatorily vaccinated, as well as obviously masked. I realize this may sound extreme, but keep in mind, two children under the age of 17 died this week of COVID in Memphis, Tennessee. And locally, nursing staff at Enlow are being offered a $400 bonus per extra shift they accept due to overwhelming patient totals at our local hospital. The thought of students not being masked in crowded junior high and high school hallways is unacceptable. There is simply not enough fresh air to safely move amongst those crowded halls. Masked safely, firmly, and consistently warm, as worn, excuse me, as well as vaccinations for all students over age 12, and age 12 and over, is the only effective way to keep our kids in school, full-time, long-term, without a lag in learning progress. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Claudia D., followed by Jeannie Cutberth. Claudia is in person.
I want to speak. Thank you. A recent study shows that children have experienced great harm from the measures imposed on them during the COVID epidemic. The study used data from Germany's first registry, recording the experiences children were having wearing masks. The registry was used by 20,300 people, including the parents, the doctors, and others reporting for the children. Using this data, researchers found 24 health issues reported, with the following symptoms: irritability, 60 percent; headaches, 53 percent; difficulty concentrating, 50 percent; less happiness, 49 percent; reluctance to go to school, 44 percent; impaired learning, 38 percent; drowsiness and fatigue, 37 percent; shortness of breath, 24.4 percent; shortness of breath; dizziness, 17.9 percent. This is the damage that is done to children. Now, there was another study published, posted last month, looking at the death occurring in children in the UK during the first 12 months of the COVID epidemic. It found that 99.995 percent of the children- It found that 99.995% of the children diagnosed with COVID survived. So how much is the death rate? So that number, oh, and in the US, there have been 335 children dying of, with a COVID diagnosis on their death certificate. And that includes, that the number includes all who died of other causes with a COVID Now, a study was performed by University of Warwick in the UK. It looked at children' absences between September 2020 and December 2020, looking at the number of students and teachers staying home from school sick with COVID. Well, thank you for listening.
Okay. Our next speaker is Jeannie Cutberth, followed by James Bishop.
My name is Jeannie. And sitting out here and watching you people, realizing that most of you, there is one gentleman that I believe that might be on our side, worried about our kids. You up there are all in lockstep, letting other people tell you what you need to do for our kids. These people out here should be making the decisions, not you. This is serious. This is serious what's going on in our country. And for you to say that these kids, little kindergarten, can you imagine a kindergarten having to wear a mask for, I don't know, six hours, four hours every single day? They don't want to wear a mask. None of us want to wear a mask because we're free. We're Americans. And we should be able to make up our own minds, not let people like some of you tell us that we have to put masks on our kids to go to school and learn. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed of all of you. And I'm disappointed in the human race. I've got, I've got a lawsuit here that I want to drop off to each one of you that's going on across the country. And by God, if you guys don't make the right decision, you're all going to get one of these lawsuits. Because sitting here listening to you, you're, do all of you have kids? Do you have kids? Put your hand up if you've got kids. And this is what you want to do to your own kids? What a disappointment that is, that you, that you went, yeah, this is what I want to do to my kids. Well, I don't want this done to my kids or my grandkids. I want us to be free to make up our own minds. If somebody here wants to put a mask on a three-year-old, go for it. But don't tell me that the rest of us have to. What a disappointment. And we elected you? Well, guaranteed, we got that petition out there that we're signing by the hundreds to get rid of you for this that you are doing to Chico. So I'm going to leave these so you can all read it. Because this is what's kind of going to come to you. If the decision you make to say that you're going to put masks on kindergarten through whatever, Chico State, adults? I'm embarrassed for you. I really am. I'm embarrassed. You're just a disappointment to all of us.
Our next speaker is James Bishop, followed by Holly Nielsen.
So last summer, I sent you guys easily enough research to conclude that, last summer, I sent you guys research that you could conclude that children did not need to be kept out of school or mitigated in any way if they went back to school. And it included, I won't go into all of it because people have actually brought up some actual science tonight, but the Icelandic study that came out right out of the gate in April, they sequenced the RNA of everybody in Iceland and did not find a single instance of a child infecting their parent. So they don't wear masks when they're with their parents and they don't social distance. So the, the research since then has been overwhelming in support of this. So I also pointed out last summer that the LA County Teachers Union released a white paper where they stated that kids would not be going back to in-person education until charter schools were closed and the police were defunded. So this was an overt, just making it clear so we don't really have to debate about it. They were in the position of being willing to exploit the suffering of children, that the CDC was being very clear at the time. Children need to go back to in-person education or they're going to suffer grave harm. That's a quote. And they, they were taking advantage of that in order to expand their power. If you don't think that's a fair assessment, I'd like to hear how you would interpret it. Since then, studies have shown things like the incidence is lower in school for kids under a certain age. It's, it's not hard to interpret, so I'll, I'll leave that. The American Federation of Teachers and the unions constantly claimed that they wanted schools open, but also created criteria so that they would never be able to open the schools. It was really growingly obvious to everyone, I think. When, when Walensky was appointed to the CDC directorship, she, the CDC all of a sudden started kind of echoing this rhetoric of the teachers' unions. So it becomes suspicious, maybe there's some relationship between the two. Well, that was confirmed beyond doubt with a Freedom of Information request, a FOIA that pulled all the email traffic between the CDC and the AFT and showed that the CDC had been poised in the January, February timeframe to issue guidance which would have allowed all schools to open. But instead, they inserted some language about community spread, which closed 99% of schools. So they went from 100% open to 1% open. And it turns out that that language was a direct quote from a request through email that the AFT made to, to have this language inserted, and the CDC complied. So really, I would just want to ask you guys, do you think that this is a political power play that our kids are being subjected to or not? If we all kind of agree on that, then we should do, for God's sakes, just about anything we could think of to resist, right? So I think, you know, I don't, I'm not concerned about my kid wearing a face shield, okay? I don't think that a face shield is going to harm them particularly. I think that forcing my child to do anything that has no basis behind it, for some kind of an authoritarian reasons that's connected to all kinds of political stuff, is as horrific as you can get, right? So if we all agree on this, and I have a feeling there is some agreement, let's figure out what to do about it, okay? I'm figuring out what to do about it in my community, but I would love to partner with you to figure out what to do about it. Because it's not okay. We need to stop this. We need to resist in any manner that we can think of, okay? I hope this is making sense to you.
Okay. Our next speaker is, and our last speaker, Holly Nielsen.
First off, the board's presentation talks a lot about the California Department of Public Health mandates, but, you know, doesn't mention that masks are only authorized under federal law, the Emergency Use Authorization Act, which explicitly states that individuals can opt out. That means mask choice. It does not require anything to be filled out by any medical practitioner. And also, just to make a comment, now, now you're going to turn teachers into the mask police, as if they don't have enough to manage already? I'm, I'm shocked. I'm frankly shocked. I'm an associate marriage and family therapist. I see a lot of adolescents and children in my practice, many highly traumatized, Butte County highest ACE scores in California, maybe, maybe the nation. During my graduate studies in psychology, I was a student of the neuroscientist Stephen Porche's polyvagal theory, which is a sort of a universal theory of the etiology of trauma. What his theory and related research basically says is that most of the higher functions of the human brain, the mammalian brain, are dedicated to what he calls the social engagement system. Our entire nervous system is literally wired for connection, and this wiring is entirely mediated through the face and the voice. What creates trauma is not necessarily that bad things happen to us. It is when our nervous system signals that we are alone when bad things happen to us. People heal from trauma when they're connected with others, as mediated by engagement through the face and voice, which then creates a resonance in heart bio rhythms in which our nervous system signals safety, connection, love. So what happens to this system when we're masked up? The social engagement system goes offline. Our nervous system cannot read one another's faces and our voices are muffled. Social engagement, as it is understood by our nervous system, in the face of another is not present at all. Our nervous system believes that we're alone, our cortisol, adrenaline are increasing, we become stressed. And for children, the sense of being alone is enough to traumatize them. It's literally creating trauma in our children. For children, masking is especially detrimental and will have long-term effects on their physical, mental, and emotional well-being. As I said, most of our higher brain function is dedicated to the social engagement system. Children's forebrains do not even mature until they're 15 or 16 years old. Healthy brain development in children is completely dependent on their social engagement system's ability to consistently connect with others in their environment. In its absence, you have trauma. You can see that in some of the statistics that already have coming out in this year of masking and social distancing, 334% increase in cutting and self-harm behaviors. I cannot tell you how common this is in our kids today. It is a crisis. You're creating a crisis. Children are at very little risk from COVID. You know, people who need to, you know, they're immunocompromised, older, they can take the vaccine, protect yourselves, but the rationale I'm hearing here that supports the masking of children goes something like this. Children, those dirty little germaphiles are spreading the virus and endangering others. You know, since, since when are we okay with sacrificing our children?
Holly, you have the red sign for stopping.
For the comment, good. Ends justifies the means, never. Means are everything.
So I'm going to go back to Eileen. Eileen, you had some questions that you wanted to present?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Kaiser, for recognizing me under board discussion. I'm going to start with, with 600,000. And just remind us, as I remind myself, that 600,000 Americans are dead because of the COVID. And now that we have new variants, you know, the numbers have increased. This is, this is not pretend, in my opinion. This is real. And the, the acquaintances that I've lost were, were here and now they're gone. Back to what we are about here tonight. The CDC has, at this point, said that in order to get everyone back in school full time, which is the number one desire, and mine as well, that masks are what will keep us safe indoors at schools, and they are mandated. The governor's authority under that mandate and the authority that he has under a health emergency does give him the authority to mandate the masks. The governor then said, at the local level for schools, we get to decide, not if we're going to mandate masks, but when we mandate masks, how we will enforce it. So the concerns we heard tonight from very concerned parents were that they wanted parent choice. And that, that has been heard loud and clear. So the district has made sure that parent choice, following the same forms and guidelines that we have, parent choice for other medical issues in the schools is available. It's a simple form that will be highlighted, I understand, later in the meeting. So we have, we have given the parents that are concerned the method by which to get their kids back into school full time without the mask mandate if they have the waiver under the proper form. Now, the, the next issue that I have is, is very much a concern about what we have negotiated with our unions. And how the effect of that memorandum of understanding that, that says that the teachers will follow the directives of the State Department of Health, that says that when a child comes into the classroom, they have to have a mask on, as well as the teacher and the aides and anyone else that's in the classroom, they all have to have masks. But what if a teacher does not say to a student that walks into a classroom and the teacher is not aware of an exemption and does not say anything to the student? What kind of liability does that teacher present for themselves by not dealing with an unmasked and, to the teacher's knowledge, unexempted student coming into a classroom? I'd like, you know, either Mr. Gant or Mr. Hamlin that handles our labor relations with CUTA to answer that if they might.
So when we negotiated the, the MOU, we did not deal with any liability issues. So I'm going to defer that to our attorney, Paul Gant. But if they do not follow the agreement, they're open to disciplinary action by their administrator. So, so, you know, as far as that goes, we'll have conversations about that with, with teachers and go through due process. But I'm going to leave the liability issue to Mr. Gant.
Paul, I believe you're on. Do you want to give a response to that?
Thank you, Madam Board President. Thank you, members of the board and members of the public. Board Member Robinson, the, there are several areas in which legal liability could be faced by the district if it, if you do not, if you do not have a policy in place that is directed to provide a reasonable approach to implementing the mask mandate that has been issued at the state level. One of those, yes, is a potential issue with regard to your collective bargaining agreements. Even though it may be a teacher whose actions or inactions are the immediate cause of the mask not being, not being implemented in a classroom, ultimately, a teacher is under the supervision of a principal, is under the supervision of district administration. And the union, to the extent that you have obligations with the union to follow the guidelines of the public health, California Public Health Department, if you don't take reasonable steps to do that, and then employees fail to act because you're not implementing reasonable enforcement steps, implementation steps, then that could be the basis of either a violation of your MOU. It could be an unfair labor practice. Or it could be a violation of your duty to bargain fairly with the union, and that could also lead to potential liability in that sense. The other sources of liability are, of course, if there was an outbreak and that outbreak could be traced to a certain location, such as a classroom or a site, and that site was not implementing the mandate of the state, then causation would have to be proven by the person injured, which would presumably be individuals who contracted COVID. And ultimately, liability could attach in that circumstance. I will tell you, I think it's important to remember that, as it is always a big issue with regard to all businesses and public agencies, you rely on having adequate insurance coverage to cover you in the event that a lawsuit is filed for personal injury, or that personal injury damages may come to pass. The, most of the carriers for school districts throughout the state of California have stated that an intentional failure to implement the direct mandate from the California Department of Public Health, unknowing of Public Health, a knowing and intentional failure to implement that directive, could very much place in doubt whether your insurance would even be in place, meaning you would bear the cost of defending the lawsuit and the cost of any damages would come from your general fund as opposed to having that backup from your insurance company. As an attorney, I know that that's a very significant concern. I would never want to have a client lose coverage because just the expense of defending a lawsuit, even one where ultimately you may succeed, is so overwhelming and obviously would drain resources from the district that you need for other and much more important purposes. I would say the most direct source of liability, in terms of when we talk about a legal action that could impact you soon and that could result in expense to the district, would be a legal action in the form of what we call a petition for a writ of mandate. And there, a member of the public says, "The state has ordered all school districts, not just Chico Unified, that you will implement a mask mandate." It's outside the board's jurisdiction and the district's jurisdiction to refuse to try reasonably to implement that. So if you took a position that says, "We just won't do it. We don't agree with it, and even though a higher agency has the authority and the right to order us to do that," a member of the public could take you to court under one of these petitions for a writ of mandate in order to get a judge to order the district to comply with the established law. There is little doubt that the governor, under the emergency order, and the Department of Public Health, under the direct supervision of the governor, and under the Health and Safety Code, has the authority in a public health emergency to direct subdivisions of the state, such as school districts, to implement these policies. And even though you may disagree with them, failure to do so could subject you to a lawsuit of the sort that I explained. The law provides that you would have to not only pay for your own legal fees and costs, but likely the legal fees and costs of the other side, the member of the public who brought the lawsuit, and their attorneys. And I assure you, there are a number of attorneys and groups out there that are anxiously awaiting this opportunity. You would have to pay their legal fees. I see this particular type of lawsuit as your greatest risk because I feel that a negligence lawsuit, a lawsuit that says an injury was caused by COVID, will be difficult to win, and it will take a long time to get there. I don't think that's your most direct threat. It's a possibility. But I do believe the writ of mandate possibility, and I also believe that the issues pertaining to your collective bargaining units are also very significant. And all of those would run you at great cost to defend. I hope I've answered the question primarily that you asked.
Thank you, Paul, very much.
Dr. Kaiser, I'd like to add one more thing regarding negotiations. It's been reported in the different news organizations about the reluctance of teacher unions to open schools and be pro-mask nationally. I just wanted to state publicly that in negotiations with our local union, we were able to open on October 19th because both unions worked hand-in-hand with us, the district, in order to open it, when 80% of the state remained closed for the remainder of the year. In the spirit of negotiations regarding masking, our conversation with them has been centered around the issue of when can we take masks off, not are we going to make everyone wear them? So when we were having those conversations, we had to choose at that time some way to, I guess, in a neutral fashion, where one group or another couldn't mandate that everyone else wear a mask if it was safe to take them off just because they were afraid of what could possibly happen. And that's when we agreed to let that fall on the Health Department, which we were mandated to do anyway, and we agreed with that, that that would be the organization that would allow us, at that point, to do that. And therefore, no teacher group, minority group, could make everyone else wear it just because they continued to fear COVID. So I just wanted to put that out there, that there were very positive conversations and discussions, and that was the spirit of the agreement that we reached with our teachers' union. So whatever's happening out there at the state and national level, it was very positive at the local level in getting our schools open and as soon as legally possible, concerning what Mr. Gant just said, is whenever we can get those masks taken off, they were in support of that.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. I think that's a really good clarification. I do want to go back for a second to Eileen Robinson. Did you have your questions answered?
Yes, Dr. Kaiser, thank you. I had both the concern about the liability of the teacher, the district, and our fiduciary responsibility to follow the law. And they were all answered. Thank you.
I'd like, could I ask a question of Mr. Gant? Mr. Gant, I assume you're aware that there are some districts in our area, and then, very notably, Clovis Unified School District, has produced a form online where not only a medical professional, but a parent could also get on and essentially certify that their child was unable to wear a mask. This district, Clovis Unified, is about three times the size of Chico Unified, maybe a little bigger. I know, I assume you're not representing them, and you wouldn't tell me if you were, I guess.
I would let you know right away, and then I would plead conflict of interest. But no, actually, I do not represent Clovis. That's why.
So do you have any sense as to how these other districts are justifying their decision in light of what you've said? You've painted a very doom-and-gloom scenario for, basically, I think that you're essentially saying that because of various areas of liability, it's unconscionable that we would, you know, empower parents to decide that a mask created an unhealthy situation for their child?
Well, you know, I'd be very honest. I cannot speak for the other districts that have implemented different policies. I can say I've appeared before many boards, including boards much larger than the Clovis District. And what I hear across the board is very similar in your community with other communities, which is a great deal of serious controversy, points of view on all sides, different sides, with a lot of good-faith people, with a lot of data that goes in different directions, and real concern from many different groups and concerned boards, boards who are listening, boards who are trying to, you know, find their way through. And so I'm very sympathetic to that. I try to do with all my boards, including your board, when asked, to provide you with legal options, you know, options that I believe are defensible. Sometimes, we have to, it's not unlike, you know, the COVID exposure issue, you know, you're weighing risk and you're deciding, you know, the board's deciding what's going to be of the greatest risk. On the issue of what some have called self-attestation, in other words, what I think was the primary basis of your question, the question of, can parents simply advise the district that, based on my own judgment as a parent, my child should not wear a mask and therefore do not take steps to implement that with regard to my child? What the Department of Public Health has said, and I don't know if Nan is still available, but she might be able to comment on this, is that we're mandating these masks in the absence of a medical exemption, and they're very specific on that point. It's got to be a medical exemption. And the reason being is that they are designed to, according to the Department of Health, and again, there's obviously different points of view as to whether they are right or they are wrong, they're designed to both protect the wearer of the mask and others who may be at risk. And again, according to what Department of Public Health says as part of their rationale for these rules, is that the most protection is when you have a variety of mitigation measures, including masks by all parties, since that provides some alleged amount of protection for both the wearer and the person who may be exposed to them. So that's what they say. And then they said, as a result of that, we are mandating that schools have everyone wearing a mask. This has been strengthened in just recent days to include all persons in all indoor locations in school. And they have emphasized that that exemption is a medical exemption. So the question becomes, should you implement a self-attestation rule that says a parent can opt out, essentially based on their subjective decision that that's not best for the child, is that going to subject the school district to the same type of risk that I described with regard to a simple, across-the-board opt-out of the CDPH guidelines? I think that there's a high chance it would subject you to risk because the CDPH has identified it as a medical exemption, a medical exemption. And in my experience, in school districts, when there needs to be a medical basis for an action or an inaction, it requires the input of a physician in the state of California. Those can be mental health practitioners, by the way, I heard that question. Yes, licensed mental health practitioners can be physicians in the state of California whose opinions can be considered. But in the absence of that, I think there would be a strong argument and a strong basis for that writ of mandate action or other legal actions if it was on a, essentially, a parent opt-out basis. One of the areas, and I think some of your board members, and all of you may have some experience with this, but sometimes we have to implement special rules with regard to children in the schools based on a medical condition, and we have to develop, in conjunction with our school nurses, a health and safety plan. That's a detailed plan that says, "We need to do something special for this child because of, it may be a medication they take, it may be a condition they have, but there are exceptions we need to make for this child, or special accommodations they need, or we may have to actually assign a staff person to support this child in some way." And we have to develop a health and safety plan. That health and safety plan generally must be signed off on by a physician. So that's just one example. There are others, but this is typically the rule with regard to a medical issue.
I want to thank you, Paul.
I hope that that covers most of the question, but I am happy to take a follow-up.
I think that did respond directly to that. The format is typically a 504, and that is with a medical practitioner, and it can address a number of issues. So we've concluded our public comment, and thank you for trying to respect, and I think most of you did really well, the timing issue so that we could get everybody in. I think that's important, that they get to provide their input as well. And then, are there any more questions or discussion issues with the board before we take action on this?
I'm fine. Robinson has no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. And Tom, were you first, or I didn't see?
Our parliamentarians not here, but somebody will make a motion, correct? And presumably, maybe we'll get a second. And then will there be one more round of comment remarks before we take a vote?
We can do that.
Yes. In the parliamentary procedure, after the motion is when the board debates among itself.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion?
Sure. In the interest of getting to that debate, I will move the adoption of the facial covering protocols as put before us tonight.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you. So Tom Lando has made the motion, and Eileen Robinson has seconded it. So now we may have further discussion. Did you want to?
Yeah, it's our practice here to make an explanation if we think we're going to make a dissent, which I anticipate that I will. There's been some things worked into the policy that I think are frankly admirable on the part of the district. I think that the medical exemption, expanding to include mental health professionals, gives a meaningful amount of leeway to this rule, which broadly speaking, I do not support. The thing that really gets me about this proposal and limiting parents' rights over this masking requirement, I guess, is the very young kids. I've thought very deeply about this situation, and really, if it wasn't for the kindergartners through the third graders, I could almost stomach the face masks or the face shields, you know, with the coverage on them and just the variety of options. I think the whole thing is overkill from a general, broad, public policy standpoint. Some of our speakers, we had a number, I think, of really great points that were made from public commentators. The most powerful is that for children to suffer mortality from COVID is so rare as to be statistically, you know, a 0% chance, essentially. I think it's like, I saw that it was 0.00 or maybe 0.03% of all COVID cases among children resulted in mortality. And that's just COVID being among the reasons that those children died, you know, nationally, we've heard the number here a few times, it was, you know, 300 and some children total. So to me, that just doesn't justify this just massive change to the way children grow up and interact with one another and interact with their teachers. I just really can't support it as a matter of public policy. But like I said, the face shields being an option for people and the exemptions that do exist, I think are welcome caveats for me in this policy, but I can't stomach supporting masking, you know, universal, day-long masking for kindergartners through third graders. So for my part, if somebody was willing to amend this motion to allow parental discretion on those kids, then I could be persuaded to support this.
I think we had a very clear answer from our attorney that the CDC has made it really clear that it's medical. We have expanded it, as you note, to recognize mental health practitioners, but he was pretty clear about that. Tom, did you have other comments that you wanted to make?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. The first is just a general apology. I heard a speaker today say that I had called some members of the public dumb, and that is completely not true. I am so glad that you guys are here, and I am glad that you are participating, and we do, all of us, listen to everything you guys say and take it into consideration. So that said, I kind of want to take this back to the very basics. We have a couple of things we need to do here, right? We need to protect ourselves legally as a district, and of course, we need to keep the students safe and educated. It's become clear that we are kind of damned if we do and damned if we don't, since we've been threatened with lawsuits from both sides. So.
They're all coming without masks. You better find a way, because longer they are too.
I'm sorry for the disruption, so Tom, if you want, continue.
Thank you.
They are. They're all coming without masks, so be better for us, because long as they are children, they can't breathe. No kidding. I'm sorry for the disruption, so Tom, if you want, continue.
Thank you. So given that, I don't really feel the need to dive into the debate about the science.
You're disrupting the meeting, so you can do that, thank you. Pick one up and read it, but see if you got the guts to do that.
So what we should be looking for is a protocol towards enforcement that both protects our students and all of our students, as well as making sure that we all have the most access possible to the curriculum. I would be open to some kind of change in either the wording or in our in-school protocols for the K through 2 students, because I have the same concern. I have a kindergartner. I'm very concerned about speech and language development among our early readers, so I would love to hear some spit-bongs, possible ideas from staff about what that might look like. Do we have anything like that?
I can throw one out there. I visited classrooms last year and went to kindergarten classrooms and, you know, was asked, it is crucial that students be able to see our face and that we can see theirs, especially when we're teaching them reading, when we're doing phonics. And what the teacher used was the Clear Face Shield, and asked if that was appropriate for students as well, and that's what he used in his classroom. And I will tell you, it is an amazing kindergarten teacher that always has fantastic results.
I think I know who you're talking about. Would it be possible or feasible to offer face shields just as a first level, instead of saying, take the mask, no, okay, get a face shield, just have the face shield there present for any of those students who would benefit from that?
I personally think that's a wonderful compromise.
Thank you.
I would, first of all, I had one that just finished kindergarten, and so you wait for them to come out, and they're, all the classes are lined up together, and I literally didn't see any issue that the kids were expressing over a mask. I actually had to remind mine to take them off when we got out. But I think the face shields are a very good aspect. I don't know that we need to quote-unquote "offer them first," but they're there and they can be used with the language professionals that we have at each school site. Every school site has a speech specialist, and so, again, there are individual professionals who are attending to the speech needs. I do have one that had speech issues, and he was in second grade, and he didn't have any problem, you know, after having had the speech therapy with wearing a mask. Eileen, did you have anything that you wanted to comment in this area of discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. Yes, I do. I had received information that we have a significant supply of the face shields, so that using them and offering them is not an issue. I believe Mr. Baltimore gave me that information, if he could respond to that.
Well, I don't have the exact number with me, but we have a substantial amount of face shields in our warehouse, so it would not be a problem providing those for the start of school, and then we'll order more if needed.
So in clarification, particularly with the younger grades, that we would make sure that parents and teachers knew they were available?
Yes, we have a process that's already in place that office managers can put in their orders, and they're delivered the same day, if not the next day, for both masks and face shields. So we would make sure that that process was still ready to go, and we had enough of the face shields in our warehouse for distribution.
If you remember, when we were first starting out with COVID, that's what the board was given, we were given face shields to wear, so we've experienced that personally. Eileen, did you have another aspect that you wanted to comment on?
No, thank you, Dr. Kaiser. I believe my questions have been answered.
All right. Matt?
I've got a question about the face shields, and if this more general discussion item is not appropriate, let me know. But is there anybody here, is the public health still on? Okay, so there's no one here who knows the extent to which CO2 gets caught in a face shield situation or anything like that? I mean.
They're not hot, or?
I read something about it, does something hang off the bottom of it, like a cloth hangs around the bottom of the face shield, or is it more like a sneeze guard sort of a thing?
The ones that we have in stock do not have the drape, I think is what it's called on them.
Thank you.
Also, I believe that number is a little over 5,000 that we have in our warehouse right now. Again, under Mr. Lando's point, we have a leadership meeting with all administrators coming tomorrow, and then we also have a professional development day with all of our teachers on the 12th. We clearly can be telling our teachers, you can offer either one of those options to the student. It doesn't have to be, oh, you're not wearing it, we'll give you, offer a shield then. Our teachers are very good about wanting their kids in class also, so they can clearly offer, I can give you either-or, a mask or a shield.
If I may, and I hesitate, but in that you are making the policy and you're amending the policy on the spot, I do feel I have an obligation as your counsel to at least direct you to that rule as you develop this particular aspect of it. It is relatively short, if I may read it to you. There is some specific guidance in the CDPH order on this point. May I read that?
Yes, please, go ahead, Paul.
Okay, so this is in the updated guidance from August 2nd, so understanding, and some of this is not that new, but this is continuing to be in their specific guidance that was just updated. And this is under the masking requirement, and it's one of the exceptions that was specifically addressed, and as you've been speaking about, in terms of ensuring that the students are going to be able to be properly educated, they refer to that as a pedagogical or developmental reason, okay? So that's what that refers to when I read that. They say, under masking, Section 1 subdivision F of the school guidance of August 2nd, they state, "In limited situations where a face covering cannot be used for pedagogical or developmental reasons, for example, communicating or assisting young children or those with special needs, a face shield with a drape, per CDPH guidelines, can be used instead of a face covering while in the classroom, as long as the wearer maintains physical distance from others. Staff must return to wearing a face covering outside the classroom." Now, I do interpret that, I think a reasonable interpretation, is that the face shield with drape can be used by the teacher and the student for those pedagogical or developmental reasons. But I just wanted to point out that there are a couple specifics there that need to be taken into account. And one is that it does specify the drape, and it also specifies that it is to be used in combination with physical distancing. I would tend to interpret that as three feet, but they haven't been specific, so I think it's as much as possible with a guide of being three feet if possible.
And I do believe that in most, if not all of our classrooms, we can meet the three-foot social distancing.
One of the advantages of the face shield is, again, the sound is transmitted, you can see the lips and the facial expressions, so I don't think there'd be the sense that they would have to be so close together. We actually have the reference to the face shield in our policy, so I don't think we have to actually make an amendment. It's already recognized that that's an accepted option for individuals, and for sure, speech is the number-one limitation or special need that any school district has. That's why we have a speech therapist at every single site. So it makes sense that the younger the student, the more likely they would be benefiting from being able to see as well as hear the sounds and the movement. So, yeah. So, yes, Tom?
I just want to address Paul for a moment. I think that what you were bringing up was that our face masks for students do not have drapes, and the language in the guidance specifically states that that's what needs to be used.
This is Kevin. Can I add just a point to that? The face shields that we ordered and have used last year, we applied our own shield or a drape using, in essence, a paper towel almost with a tape. The reason being, you could then dispose of that versus having some cloth that needed to be washed. It proved effective, and it gave kind of the opportunity to change that out multiple times during the day. That's the same system we would use now. So I just want to point out, what we have for drapes is a self-applied, in essence, paper drape.
And we have the time and resources to do that to the 5,000 or whatever, as we need them?
We leave that up to the individual to put those on.
Okay.
And if there's any doubt, then there's always, that's one of the benefits of having your local health officer. If you have a question about, hey, is that appropriate under the guidelines, then my sense is they would be able to give you that guidance to say, yes, that solution is appropriate, and that's acceptable. And you can rely upon that type of interpretation should come to that.
All right, thank you. Any other points of discussion? All right, well, seeing none, then I'd like to move to the vote.
Did I understand there was some kind of amendment, or could we have the motion read back, please?
We didn't do an amendment, right? We just, it's, the reference to face shields is already included in the document. So are you asking for that entire protocol to be read? No, okay.
Excuse me, Matt. Can I make a, just to clarify this, can I make a, what is it, an author's amendment to my own motion, just with some clarifying language?
Well, if it's an amendment, it'll have to be seconded, yeah, so.
I would be happy to, I mean, I can make myself a friendly amendment and then prove it. I'd be happy to change that language so that we are adopting the presented facial covering protocols with the understanding that face shields will be a first-line offering for students in K1 or 2.
Is there, Eileen, are you wanting to see that as friendly?
I do not believe that's, I'm not going to second it, because I don't believe it's necessary, and I support the ability for the students that do the masking really well, as Kelly said, you know, that I've observed the same thing. I think that the face shield as an option, when the need arises or is requested, is sufficient. So I do not support the amendment.
Is there another second?
Is there what? I'm not seeing one. So that friendly amendment dies for the lack of a second, and so, again, we are looking at voting for the face covering compliance protocol that was presented by Jay Marchand at our meeting. It's an entire layout of all the protocols that we do have, and so we'll need a voice vote, so I'm calling on Eileen first.
Robinson, aye.
All right, Matt?
Tennis nay.
Okay. Oh, Kaiser, aye.
Lando, aye.
All right, so it passes four to one, no, I'm sorry, three to one, and, all right, thank you. So we move on then to the Assembly Bill AB 104, Student-Pupil Instruction, and again to Mr. Marchand.
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. This is an informational only, we just wanted to update the board on this new Assembly Bill AB 104, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. John Shepherd at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Marchand. So just to move things forward, as Mr. Vincent is pulling up the presentation, as you'll recall, last spring, there was some legislation that came out that did adjust the grading and graduation expectations for California students. And another round was passed this summer, so I just want to walk the board through this presentation, just informational only. It's our goal, not only tonight, but as already has happened last week and will continue to happen tomorrow and also next week, we want to get this information out to the public because there are some timelines that we need to make sure we're aware of. So basically, this legislation includes AB 104, and AB 130 includes three education codes. We're going to talk about AB 130 separately. So Assembly Bill 104 establishes three additional education codes. And as you can see here, the first one focuses on student retention for grades K through 11, and then an opportunity to change grades to pass, no pass, and graduation requirements. So most importantly, parents and community members need to understand who the affected students are for each of these ed codes. As you'll see in this ed code, this first one, 48071, mainly focuses on K11's students' ability to be retained. Fortunately, Chico Unified already has a robust board policy and administrative regulation protocol to address retention, so we're covered with this, and we feel like we have process in place. The second ed code is directly related to changing grades from a pass to no pass. And as you can see here, the affected students are those who were enrolled in Chico Unified, grades 9 through 12 during the 2021 school year. And that's an important distinction, because some folks might, when they received our ARIAS communication, they reached out to us last week wondering if their seventh grader could have his grades changed, and this only affects students 9, 12 through the 2021 school year. Now, as you can see here in bold, it's really important for the board and the public to understand that families and students only have 15 days from the operative date of the legislation to notify a school of an interest in changing grades. The frustration for some is this 15 days began on July 16th and will end prior to the start of school. So again, it's imperative that we communicate with our public. We've already done so through ARIAS communication. That came out from the district. It's going to come out again from the school sites tomorrow and again next week, so we can just keep hammering home this understanding that there is a process in place for our students to change their grades.
This is so critical. I really hope that, I'm concerned that parents knowing, thinking, knowing this school's not going to start till the 16th, they may be not checking these kinds of information sources. So I hope our media coverage will present this very dramatically, because that would be extremely sad if a student simply missed it because...
Thank you, Dr. Kaiser. If anyone has any questions about any of this, please contact me at the district office at 891-3000, extension 20105, because it's important that we get this information out to our public. I do want to note, it's in small font, but it's important to note that the CSU has been directed to accept pass-no-pass.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the UC has not, and so parents need to consider that. Talk to counselors, talk to the guidance counselors at the universities. The California Department of Education has provided a list of schools outside the UC and CSU that will accept pass-no-fail, and you can access that. and CSU that will accept pass, no fail, and you can access that on their website. So I think it's important that parents understand CSU must accept those grades, the UC, they may. And then lastly, this affects the, the students who are left out of the first ed code for graduation requirements. Specifically, these students who were in their third or fourth year of high school during the 2021 school year. So that'd be our current seniors and last year's seniors. And again, they need to reach out to the school site. We do have this policy, or this ed code covered again in, in our board policy and administrative regulation if students are interested in retention. The purpose behind this legislation is to provide learning recovery and graduation options for students. So it's just one more step that the legislation took.
May I ask a question here?
Mm-hmm.
It says third or fourth student, and I've been wondering, do we know whether that refers to academic status or years? If we've had a student who was already, say, retained at one point, so they were in their third year as a, say, sophomore, would they fall under this as well?
So typically, students aren't, aren't retained until their senior year. There, it's all based on credits once they're into high school. So it'd be their third or fourth year of high school.
Okay. So there are, there are no corner cases to which that applies?
None that I know of, but I've, I've been wrong today.
Once. Okay.
Got, any questions, any other questions from the board? Okay.
So I guess for me, the, the, really, the stressor is to get this information out to the public as many times as we can because I think this is extremely important information.
And Mr. Shepherd, we have sent that out to each individual family at the secondary level, correct?
Not just secondary, we've sent it out to every student because it does affect elementary students.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So we are, that was just information only. It's very critical information for individual families and students. So we'll move on to business services, and we have a transportation update by Kevin Baltimore.
Yes, we want to make the board and the public aware of, of the challenge we're going to have starting the school year on our transportation department. COVID pandemic really impacted the number of bus drivers we have on staff. As a reminder, is, we have a lot of drivers that this is a second career, and certainly the pandemic had an impact. So we have Bob Onavares, our transportation supervisor, and John Carver, and they'll just give you a brief summary of where we stand today, and then also inform the board and the public of the steps we've been taking over the last number of months to try and do a better job recruiting and retaining drivers. So without, I turn it over to Bob and John.
We need your sound higher. It's pretty low.
I think you're not on or something.
Is that a little better?
Yeah, all right.
All right. Again, I thank you for an opportunity to share what's going on in transportation with you. We do have some significant challenges this year. We actually currently have 11 driver positions open. If there's anybody out there looking for a, a position, we would more than gladly train you and provide you the skills and talents necessary to be a school bus driver. We just now have a certified school bus driver trainer on staff. We've been about a year and a half, almost two years, without one, which made it very difficult for us to not only recruit but train drivers. We're going to reduce the amount of buses that we're, and routes we're going to be providing for this year. Pre-COVID, we did eight and a half general ed routes. This year, we're going to do seven. In previous years, we did 17 special ed routes. This year, we're going to do 16. We have a, a lower application rate at this time. Usually about this time of year, we're up around 300, maybe 400 students applying. Right now, we're at about 110. We've done our best to try to let the public know that we are back in, in the saddle and ready to take students back and forth from home to school, but we will be challenged because of the lack of drivers. We've gone through several things to try to increase the driving staff. We've made the, the buses much more user-friendly by purchasing new buses. We've spent a, a great deal of money on trying to make the, the environment at the courtyard much better, more professional. And just yesterday, I believe we've passed an MOU generated by the district to increase the drivers' wage rate, which now puts us in a competitive position with the other districts around. We're going to do our best to try to attract some significant amount of drivers to provide the best transportation for Chico. We're looking at updating our EdJoin website information, telling the people that we've now have an increase in wages. We're looking to reach out through Indeed and possibly the EDD. We've considered going to some of the groups around, like Rotary, and speaking to them to see if they have any people that are interested, maybe like do a job fair, to discuss the opportunities afforded to them to become a school bus driver. And we're doing everything we can to get as many kids as we can back and forth safely to school.
How long does it usually take for the training?
It usually takes about a month because you have to go through some DMV test, then you have to go through a classroom with the driver trainer, then you have to go through a written test with the CHP, then after that, you go back to the CHP, get some more testing, come back to the trainer, get some more training behind the wheel, and then go back to the CHP, finally take one more test, and then you're certified. So about, about a month, about four weeks.
One of the provisions in the MOU allows us to now pay for drivers as they're training. So that was, we think, a barrier.
Right.
Come train with us for, and spend quite a bit of time, but no compensation as you're going through that process, but the MOU allows us to do that now.
Okay, good. Does anybody else have any questions on this?
Just two more comments, if I could. This is a statewide issue, and actually a national issue of just a decrease in the number of bus drivers. The second piece is if you heard Bob talk about the number of routes we're still operating, that really is a credit to the staff that's out there to make this work as best they can. You know, even down that number of drivers, being able to provide even half of what we did on a normal year, I think is a good, is a good effort, and we're doing better than that. So we want the board to be aware, we're not just going to take this as it comes. We think the MOU and some of the things that Bob talked about will help us, but we're going to be active as we get through the year because we want to be up to speed and home to school as quickly as possible.
And isn't it true that we have the ability to make arrangements with the, the city buses that some of our students may use that access point?
Yes, that is also true. We have had, had out bus passes in the past to students that we couldn't transport.
Okay. Tom, did you have something? No? Okay. All right. Mr. Carver?
Well, I was going to say everything that Kevin and Bob said. The only thing that I have left to, to offer is we, with the help of my office staff, we created a flyer that now we can, based on the MOU that came out yesterday, we're also going to put those out in mailings and, and give outs and whatnot. I don't, sorry, I didn't bring you a example, but Bob did. So I'll just leave this up here and you guys can look at it, and these are going to go out in mass mailings also.
All right. And I assume there'll be something hanging from one of our old buses as people drive down the freeway that...
It will almost look just like this.
[laughing]
Thank you.
All right. Well, gentlemen, I know that you work very, very hard at, this is a critical issue for every district, as you noted, and we do have to make every effort to get our students safely from school to home and back, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So our next item is the, which is an action and discussion, is the approval of new and updated board policies. And the first one is, it's on 3.3.1, and we have Jay Marchand again.
Thank you again, Dr. Kaiser. So we're bringing forward, back, bringing forward to the independent study board policy. We brought to you last week with a policy because we didn't know for sure that we were going to have another board meeting before schools started, and we needed to have a policy in place. I want to let you know that Rhonda Oldham and John Shepherd did a very good job of getting the language that we needed in there, and everything that you guys approved last, last board meeting is still in there. But between that time and this, we've had our auditor who oversees our independent study to make sure we are compliant with this board policy, and CSBA just came out with their revisions to the board policy on independent studies, so we have added their additions to this board policy, and I wanted to bring it back to you guys for approval.
Okay. So actually, I see that the first thing that showed, oh, I see. So you didn't, did you get, okay, the details on independent study is actually behind the one on COVID mitigation, that's what...
Correct. I'm sorry, yes, for some we're doing.
Okay. So does, do you want to note any, the more specific aspects where that was changed?
More goes to the ed code that they wanted to make sure that we had in here, so we added all the different ed codes that they thought would just overall cover us on our board policy to make sure we had those in there. We did not add those ed codes in there before, and so we wanted to make sure that we put those in there.
And just to add, laws get passed, and then there is the actual how they get implemented, and then how we get held accountable for them. And part of that is the auditing process, so we wanted to make sure that we covered ourselves so that when we do go through an audit, because we will on independent study, we do annually, that our board policy covers everything that the law requires. And the audit process, when we brought it forward two weeks ago, had not yet been delineated. So this updates that.
Good. So, yes.
So there's been a law passed, or laws passed, and this is in here because of these laws that are, that are passed. I, I see that if somebody's going to do an independent study, they, they now have to have a licensed, an employee who possesses a valid certification document pursuant to, I assume that's a teacher's license or something like that?
Comes through their credential.
Whereas before, you didn't have to have that, that person's oversight, now you do.
We in Chico Unified have always had credential teachers that are teaching independent study.
Thanks.
Do we have, Eileen, did you have any questions yourself on this?
No, Dr. Kaiser. I was able to review both documents.
All right. Tom?
I just wanted to state that I think one of the most, one of the biggest changes is the change that independent study programs now have to check for attendance and engagement every three days instead of five, and I think in a lot of ways, that's going to really strengthen programs by basically mandating more and better contact with kids, so I'm actually all for this.
I think we had a, a number of parents and students, sometimes teachers, who, given the rather dramatic shift that we had to make to online, that there would be disengaged And it might be for a range of reasons, but now this is a very strict framework of reference that there has to be evidence that everything from assignments to interaction, that you're not going more than three days without interaction. And given that we already talked about the changes to the grades and pass, fail, I think this will hopefully benefit students who found themselves struggling in that vein, so, yes. So it's a little unclear, would we be passing both of these as one item? They're separate components, but...
In the past, what the board has done is they've taken it as a single slate and pulled off ones that they wanted to discuss further, and then voted on those separately, so we can do that either way.
Okay. So let's then look at the 6158. That is the independent study one that our auditor did go over and that has had the changes relating to the law. Do we have any comments from the public on this? Okay. Can I have a motion then?
Dr. Kaiser, I would move approval.
All right. I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right. So Eileen Robinson moves, and Matt Tennis seconds. The 6158, the board policy on independent study, which is now compliant with the recent legal activity. Any discussion or questions? Okay. Then let's have a vote. Do we need to have a, okay. So again, we need a voice vote, so Eileen, I call on you first.
Robinson, aye.
Okay.
Tennis, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Lando, aye.
All right. So that is four to zero. Good. All right. So we move then to the other one, which is also being impacted by, I believe, is it an illegal aspect of COVID mitigation?
So this is a policy that has been recommended by the California School Boards Association. As we've already seen, the independent study was an example of this, is that sometimes regulations, laws, requirements, audit practices change very quickly, and they change faster than CSBA can update the policies. So what this is saying is that when those things happen, and there are discrepancies between existing board policy and current law or regulations or mandates, that those mandates supersede the policies that the board has in place, which they do anyway, but this just clarifies that.
Okay. So it is particularly recognizing the issue of mental and physical health in this framework.
Yes, the policy goes on, it talks about prior to the return to campus, that we provide information on processes and protocols. We've done that at the last two board meetings. It does talk a lot about the recognizing that the COVID environment has created social, emotional, mental health impacts, and this board has been fabulous about setting aside dollars to ensure that we have social, emotional supports in place for our students through additional counseling services, adding wellness counselors, targeted case managers. It also talks about the personal protective equipment that we discussed the night, and it does state in there that we do provide reasonable accommodations when we have a notice or a letter from a healthcare practitioner. It also talks about sanitization and airflow, which we are doing, as well as tracking, which we did all of last year, and will start up on the first day of school with Buick County Public Health.
So I think that last year, we had an extremely viable and usable dashboard. The Buick County Health was referencing this a number of times, but didn't seem to have it right at their hands. But I know Tina, that was a critical aspect of what you were doing. Do we have any comments on our own expectations for our tracking?
Dr. Kaiser? Dr. Kaiser?
Oh, yes.
If, is Tina going to do an update of any changes in the protocols for tracing the COVID cases? And if, if they aren't sufficient, could she let the board know if, if we need to do anything to help support the nurses?
Yeah, this is Kelly, and we are not prepared to do that at this particular point. We have not had the opportunity to meet with Buick County Public Health with our nurses and with Tina. I know Tina is all over that. She was in my office talking about it today, and she will be ready to go at the start of the school year, but because our nurses are not back yet, which is probably not a true statement, I think they've been working all summer, but officially not back yet, I'm not going to ask Tina to talk about something that really should just be... ask Tina to talk about something that really should just be having to guess at this point.
Thank you, Superintendent Staley.
My query was just, Tina, don't go. She opened the door, I'm shutting it. My question was just that we will, we are planning to have a dashboard, and we are planning to let the community know, correct?
Absolutely. We worked under Monica Soderstrom's guidance last year when we finished the school year, where she said summertime makes sense to let Butte County Public Health handle those cases because we are out of session. But Erica and I will start up with it at the beginning of the year.
All right. So, because that is one of the references in here, that we would do tracking.
Right. We believe in transparency, and we will do that.
Right. So thank you, Tina, for that clarification. Okay, does anyone, no one, anyone in the public trying to, all right, anyone in the board have a question? Okay.
And just a quick comment. I was really excited to see reference to parent volunteers back in classrooms because I know that was sorely missed at elementary levels last year. So I see in this policy that we will be having parents back on campus so that we'll be wearing PPE. And I'm just really excited for a little extra help in those classrooms.
Yeah. So could I have a motion?
I move approval.
All right. So Eileen Robinson moves approval. This is for VP 0470.
Yes, that's correct.
I'll second that.
And Tom Lando seconds. All right. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, so seeing none, we can have a voice vote on this one. All those in favor of passing BP 0470 on the COVID mitigation plan, please say aye.
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 All right.
I will be abstaining on this one, if you don't mind.
You're going to abstain?
Yeah.
Okay. So Tennis abstains. Okay. All right. So we have the, that actually was all of our official business. Is there a board member who wants to request to agendize an item? All right, seeing none. Then we will officially close this board meeting, and thank you for your participation.
Dr. Kaiser, I will state that we did not get closure on the item that we had forward for anticipated litigation. So unless there is a desire on the part of the board, we do not need to have a closed session this evening.
Oh, okay.
Then I'm back to vacationing.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, that would be motion to adjourn from Eureka, California, and board member Robinson.
Well, if you're already in Eureka, you don't have to be shouting anything.
Second.
Thank you.
You don't have to.
So we were in Sebastian, what? Oh. Did you hear?